Moment of silence for the sick, handicapped, carted military personnel of this community. Thank you. Before we get to the visitors, on Saturday, February 9th, council held an executive session to discuss a number of personnel matters and to obtain legal advice regarding those matters. And we will call our first visitor up, Mary Weiss. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike Lomar?
Here.
Bruce Calabucci?
Here.
William Henderson?
Here.
Joe Glossamo?
Here.
Joe Verducci?
Here.
Nina Petrascelli?
Here.
Janice Snyder?
Here.
Betty Copeland?
Here.
Tom McDermott?
Here.
Joe Sikes?
Here.
Mark Collins? Here. Chad King?
Here.
Bill Chilio?
Here.
Dan Miller?
Here. Mary Weiss.
Thank you.
Mary.
I know that this is a little late, but I'm sorry I couldn't make it in January. Sunday, December 23rd, because I'm trying to go from Bridgeville out to Rockland to the south, so I went down Chartier Street. Now, I am two houses from the bridge, and then from a short distance down to Rite Aid to the light. I sat for fifteen minutes. Fifteen. Every other spoke, and the whole thing moved. I sat there fifteen minutes. I'm sorry. Sorry I quit being here last month to tell you that's rotten. When it's water down or ice over the day, I'm not going to look back. I'm going back to three things quickly. We still need to consider a left turn light from Washington Avenue to Chartiers. That is a madhouse down there. We also need a left turn set of left turn lights at Station Street and Washington Avenue. And last but not least, please, traffic pen doctors start dreaming about a way to get their traffic and other traffic over to Route 519, excuse me, I-79, et cetera. And I think very much, that's all.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary. The council recognizes Ernesto.
Hi. I'm here representing the Lower Chartiers Watershed Association. We're a volunteer association that just developed last year with the idea in mind of revitalizing the watershed, repairing areas pretty much from Bridgeville down to the Ohio and these rocks. We organized a couple of events last year, some cleanup events, one canoe cleanup and one roadside cleanup along the banks. They were very successful. We've got many tons of trash out of the stream and off of the roadside. And we're looking forward to doing some more of the same kinds of things this year. And including perhaps some tree plantings. We're also beginning the first stages of doing some water testing with the intention of putting together a proposal to do some stream litigation for mine runoff. So with all that in mind, I'm really here to invite you all to a kickoff meeting that we're going to have on the 7th of March. It's going to be at Abandoned Pittsburgh in Carnegie, from 6:30 to 8:30. It's for volunteers or anybody who's really interested in preserving and helping the Lower Chartiers watershed.
Where's the location again?
Abandoned Pittsburgh. I have a, you know, if I can leave this somewhere where you can share it, but I have an invitation. We're in the final stages now of figuring out exactly what we're going to have as far as, it's basically a party. But we want to get people who are interested in being involved and setting up an agenda for the year, including the coffee side of stuff, so.
Thank you.
Will you leave that out for the coffee?
Sure. Thank you very much, Ernesto. Liz Marie Manning?
Gravy Mark. Another Italian. I am here because I happen to know on Nino, real neighbors. I've lived in Bridgeville for seven years. And I am here to represent my company by the name of Western and Southern Life. And we are in the process of doing a bid power, and we are in Pittsburgh, Rockland Campbell's Runway. And the opportunity is wonderful because our company's been around 130 years. We're based out of Cincinnati, Ohio. We have A and best N-plus ratings. We just purchased Gerber Light for quite a few billion dollars, so we're very financially strong. And we have, I think, a great value proposition for people who want to get into the business. We're a very diversified financial services organization, so we do insurance and mutual funds, investments, and all of that kind of thing. We started a new program this year where we are bringing on people that really want to make a career in this field, and we have extensive training for them to do that. We provide a base salary. We also provide commissions, but they do have a base, and we just take them through training for the first year. So anybody that you know in the community, because you're leaders of the community, would love to have you pass out the shore or give them my information. And we would love to actually interview them and have them come in and kind of kick the tires, as they say. So I have some information I can leave with you. My card is on there. And that kind of describes the opportunity. And my card is there for anyone who would like to know any more. Do you want me to pass these out or just leave them somewhere?
Want to leave them here at the front and won't grab them?
Yeah, sure. There's plenty here. And extra pens for those who don't like it. A lot of extra pens. I have sixteen, so I'll leave the others here as well. But we're looking for you to hopefully get us connected with people in the community, and then we kind of take it from there. But I think we have a good value proposition, a lot to offer somebody who's interested in a new career. And it could be someone retired. In fact, we just hired someone eighty-one years old. So there you go. Okay?
Thank you very much. Hale Livingston, please.
Good evening. I'm here again as part of the Bridgeville Greater Area Alliance, about January 12th meeting. We were, Dan Huff and I were here. We kind of gave an update on some of the flood relief stuff that the Bridgeville Lions done. We'd mentioned the possibility of working on a grant for a community disaster planning. We left for you some information. Since then, January 8th, Dan Huff and I, Dan was here at the last meeting, met with Chief King and Chief Chilio to discuss disaster, community disaster planning, in the hope of improving community disaster, communication response, and relief. Right now, it's all about contacting stakeholders, community organization, resources, that type of thing. I'm currently working on some of that with the chiefs and keep Laurie involved in what's going on. So she's involved, she knows what's going on. Thank Laurie. So the Lions and the Chiefs will get together again in a not-too-distant future after we've got somewhat of a database to put together again. But that's kind of what the Bridgeville Greater Area Alliance is working on right now, along with some of the other great events that we do for fundraisers. If anybody has any questions or wants to contact me, my information is on page 11 of the Bridgeville newsletter that just came out. Thank you very much. Phone number, email stuff, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Doug. Bob Fryer, please.
I'd like to talk about that left turn lane, but later. More importantly, I'd like to just mention that we all know that this is a year of summary. The people in Bridgeville are paying taxes higher than they should be paying for the most yearly income they have. We all do that. And my impression is, the reason that that's a condition is because many, many years ago, our very thriving business district sort of figured a way because of the traffic congestion, failure to have visible parking and competing with some of the new businesses that we put in that area from the past three years. But anyway, I wanted to mention, instantly, I have small drawings of all, most of the things are with shapes. I have them in pockets when we do it. I just wanted to show again you and everybody in the area, these are the...
Oh, give me the new.
This is all mine.
No, it's mine.
Well, why don't you get on the continue and the shakes and... These are the eight roads that lead into Bridgeville. And because Bridgeville is here hundreds of years before anybody else, it's essential, it was essential, that our officials didn't decide to not do anything about the traffic congestion. The other thing I wanted you to know, I don't think you wrote this, this is another picture of I-79 Washington Pipe. Seventy-five percent of the potential consumer owners live to the east of Washington Pipe. Okay? And essentially, what's been happening, happened, happened for decades, people...
Bob, you made me an argument.
Oh, I need more time.
No, this is stuff that we've all seen before. I gave you, I've been very generous in the past, and please write that.
You place a lot of time with somebody else to...
I took the box.
Actually, in fact, you had a ton of...
I have a ton of her, too.
Maybe that's true, but you have, you have the honor to place a limit on anybody else that's a scrubber. So that means you discriminate against...
I do not discriminate against you.
Well, we'll see. And I have evidence...
Continue.
I have evidence in the case that I did, you did. Excuse me, let me mention this to you. This is, this is essentially, excuse me, Bridgeville's problem. Four lane, four lane, a two lane in between. We all know that.
Seen that before.
I was raised in that.
Fifteen seconds.
You probably, you probably, you probably drive it all the time. What I wanted to show you is, how many of you on the council have seen the comprehensive plan of the two one-way street couple that's been proposed beginning in 1969?
I was in high school.
I wasn't born yet.
Yeah, I'm asking you, how many of you have seen as part of Bridgeville's comprehensive plan, is it a solution to the traffic congestion problem that's killed us? I mean, do you have meetings where you discuss potential...
Meetings were made back in the 90s, '12.
I mean, recently. Do you ever discuss finally creating a total solution to Bridgeville's major traffic congestion problem? But anyway, what I wanted to show you, this is it. I'll leave it here for you to look at for those who, it involves, excuse me, most of it involves extending a shady avenue 220 yards, making a three-lane south vein like Washington Avenue with a three-lane road going north. And that was, plus the fact, since your, since Washington Pipe is the major regional secondary roadway area along with Park Hill Road, that's solving the problem.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that.
The one, the one I mentioned, why, the flood thing and so forth.
We've seen this too, Bob.
This is the, this is the comprehensive plan. Okay? I'll leave it here for you guys to look at, but I want you to know, the two one-way street system worked profoundly in Bridgeville more than any other place it's been tried. Shady avenues only a half a block away from Washington Avenue. In Carnegie, for people, despite the fact that they paved over their street for ten years before they figured out the state, on, in Carnegie, there's no place to loop around. If you were to build this two-way couple just by extending shady avenue 220 yards, it would build, it would create a circle, it would make it very easy.
We understand, Bob. You've presented this multiple times. We've seen it, we know, I have copies of it at home.
That's fine.
We all do. So thank you very much.
I just wanted to, to say one last sentence. The importance of your getting the money from the federal state accounting to build such a system depends on you having part of the solution to the flooding problem involved eliminating the traffic congestion problem going from the east to Washington.
Thank you.
So I'll leave it at this.
Tim Nath, please.
Yeah, I know you guys are considering planning commission appointments along a couple of others. I just wanted to show up tonight and apply support and recommendation by I, Larry Lennon. I just wanted to, while I'm not even sure if this is necessary, if you got more than two. You guys certainly know the things that we're continuing to tackle with flood, water control, and the Baldwin Street plan, and all this other crap going on. I think most of you guys probably know Larry. Larry served on the planning commission years ago, good heart for the community. And by trade, he's got a very successful, his own engineering practice, civil engineering, a big piece of which that they deal with is flood control and water, whether the program CE knows this world. So as a fellow planning commission member, I would strongly recommend we add him. He's willing to serve again. He has the expertise. We, myself, Nino Dale, we can ask intelligent questions all day long, but some of the things we just don't know. I think he would add a ton of values to stuff that we're going to be navigating over the next couple of years. So I offer that to you as a recommendation, and I think you would add an absolute wealth of knowledge to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Liz Calhoun, please.
Hi, guys. So I just had a couple of questions on procedures. So the planning commission has brought a proposal to the Bridgeville Council. What is the procedure after proposal arrives to you?
So we need to either adopt it or, you know, basically approve it, which we have not, where we can say, excuse me, don't like it, send it back. We want to see other, see different ideas.
So when people put their voices up here about an opinion or a proposal that comes to you, is, do you consider those? I don't know if the council does, I mean...
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I agree a lot with Mr. Bob Fryer and what he has to say. And I really agree on the end of Baldwin Street having the potential to build more buildings and incomes than to build a collecting pond of water against Five Hill Road. And I really disagree with the pylon theory coming from the proposal on Baldwin Street.
Again, we've not, we have not approved any plan.
I understand. But you just said that you do take opinions.
We do. And when she, when people comment and say, hey, you're putting this plan that's out there for grand game, you're like, I don't like the pylons. We don't, a lot of us don't want to meet them, you know?
We don't know that. You're not, you're not chatting to the public. Is, do, is there a point when you discuss what the council's leaning towards to the public, or, I don't know the procedures.
After we get a chance to review it, and we have discussion, and we'll be here, we're going to bring that to council in a meeting like this, and everybody will view their opinions and go and make a decision.
So then I was okay to state my opinion, because again, he says, okay, state your opinion. And then, does, at any point, does it come to the public?
It goes to, planning, I mean, the planning commission has their meetings where they go and discuss it. That's a place where you would go and at the...
In the beginning.
At the planning stage, and express your opinions to the planning commission while they're having their meetings.
Are you required to have a public meeting advertised in the newspaper beforehand for the meeting?
So this is...
No, not, not specifically. Well, there should be.
I understand. The commission has their monthly meeting, so I understand it doesn't get advertised, because it's a monthly public meeting.
It depends upon the nature of what things you're authorizing. If it's a project, it may be a, they all happen in a public meeting. You don't need a special meeting unless we're a special advertising, unless it's, you know, usually so, or something specific. For a project, it's a ongoing discussion until, less than until they decide to approve it, or they lock it, or move forward or not.
So the authorization comes, is there a public discussion before that?
It'll be, we...
Here at this meeting? I think that just needed to be said, because maybe the public is hinging on, what do they do? What do they do? And don't know the procedures like myself. So I kind of wanted to put that out there, what are the procedures? I admire all of you being up there. I don't want to be in your shoes, so, having said that. I brought this up a couple of years ago, eighteen-wheelers coming through Bridgeville. I'm going to bring it up again. Coming down Bank Street. I mean, isn't there a way that PennDOT can restrict on their GPSs for trucks to go around? I've seen them stuck on Bank Street too many times now. Is there a way that PennDOT has anything?
It's a state road, it's a state route, so we can't control it. I mean, is it, is there limits on...
No, I've never had in twenty years a truck stuck on Bank Street. I'm not sure where you would be referring to that. It happens on Chartier Street.
Yeah.
Occasionally on Chartier.
Yeah, this truck wasn't stuck, but he had two inches way through. I mean, I have it on my phone video.
Right, I mean, I see the Mayflower movement trucks going up Bank Street all the time, the tractor trailers. I don't know.
But you know, it's so easy to, if PennDOT has something in its system that they could get on I-79, they can go I-519, Down Boys Road, and come back into Maybes, whatever they have to do. They can go up, call your exit, come down 50 to Bridgeville, take Five Hill Road, and take that out to 90, and that avoids that circle in Bridgeville. So I just thought, if PennDOT had anything, perhaps we should start talking to them a lot of, I don't know. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Liz. Regular meeting. Additional use application, 131 Washington Avenue. Additional use application submitted by the owner of the property, Tom King Jr. on behalf of the tenants. Pittsburgh Pets Home LLC was submitted for a planning commission for property located at 131 Washington Avenue. The applicant proposes to utilize the property for the establishment of a pet pre-utonom. The plan is subject to requirements in section 903-29 of the zoning ordinance, which also reference requirements in section 1001 Performance Standards. The plan was reviewed for compound, reviewed for compound performance standards for engineer sites and approved by the planning commission for consideration of council. The planning commission's recommendation of approval of the plan by council includes contingency landscaping upgrades and lighting upgrades to a gooseneck style in order to create a cohesive facade with current business in the area. Public hearing will start on February 11th, 2019, at 6:30 PM to receive citizens' comments.
I see one.
Motion by Nino.
Second.
Second by Joe Glossamo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
You can leave the place?
Oh, I, sorry. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the minutes of January 14th, 2019, regular meeting estimate. Bruce?
Second.
Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 1001. Motion of the Borough Council regarding ordinance number 1001 and ordinance permitting the Bridgeville Borough Code of Ordinance, Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part Two, Traffic Regulations, Section 15-21111. Stop intersection, stop intersections establish specifically create a stop intersection for vehicles traveling in easterly and westerly directions along Winfield Street, where Winfield Street intersects with Lafayette. Ninety degree, ninety, a ninety-day traffic study was conducted to review the impact of the stop signs on the traffic in that area. The ordinance has been duly advertised. So, first by Bill Henderson, second by Bruce Calabucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number four, 2018 sanitary sewer point repair project. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the middle, current estimate number four, 2018 sanitary sewer project, point repair project to Neando, destruction in the amount of $32,083.93 for work completed today. Estimate has been reviewed and approved by engineer sites.
I see one.
Bruce and Bruce Calabucci and Nina Piccielli. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 2019 pavement maintenance project. Motion of the Borough Council authorizing engineer sites to prepare specifications and manager columns to advertise the same for the 2019 pavement maintenance project. Engineer sites and manager columns will review the streets being located with Public Works Committee prior to the advertising of the project.
I see one.
Nino and Joe Glossamo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Four appointments. Motion of Borough Council regarding appointment to the planning commission, forty-four-year term, to the first Monday in January 2023. We have a nomination lady that's made of planning commission.
I'll nominate Larry Lennon.
I see.
Larry Lennon nominated by Joe Verducci and second by Nino. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion of the Borough Council regarding appointment of the planning commission for a four-year term to the first Monday in January 23rd. We have an appointment for a second.
A motion for Justine Cimron.
Motion by E.J. Bot, or Snyder.
Sorry.
Okay.
And second by Bruce. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion of the Borough Council regarding appointment of the zoning hearing board for a two-year term to the first Monday in January 2021.
I'll move.
You have a...
Second.
You have a motion submitted.
I'm sorry. So... John, the tenant is saying he's for it.
Okay. Joe Glossamo, who seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the appointment of, to the Civil Service Commission for a three-year term to the first Monday in January 2022.
Mike, it doesn't make a recommendation we table this. We do have an applicant, we have not met the person, and we'd like to interview that person at a public safety meeting.
Absolutely. Is there a motion table? Bruce and Joe Glossamo, all those in favor? All those opposed? It is tabled. Bill List. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the February 2019 bill list.
I'll move.
Joe Verducci and Bruce Calabucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payroll. Motion of the Borough Council approving payrolls of February 15, '22, and March 1st, and 8th, 2019. Bruce Calabucci.
Second.
And Nina Piccielli. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly reports. Motion to accept and pay any commissions due to January 2019 Real Estate Tax Collector Report.
I'll move.
Joe Verducci.
Sir.
And Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the December 2018 Financial Report.
I'll move.
Joe Verducci.
Second.
And Nina Piccielli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept January 2019 Police Report.
So move.
Second. Bill Henderson and Joe Glossamo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the January 2019 Zoning Report.
So move.
Bill Henderson.
A second.
And Janice Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, real estate tax return. Uh, motion of Borough Council regarding following real estate tax review changes in the assessments as requested by the real estate tax collector, uh.
You can include it as one motion.
All three of them?
As one, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, as, as stated.
Save a little breath.
There you go.
Big motion.
Uh, Bruce Gallego.
I'll second.
And Joe Ritchie, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, community reports, administration. I don't have any news. Finance, Joe?
Uh, finance, uh, the auditors have, uh, finished the two thousand eighteen audit. Uh, it's complete and, uh, they're preparing their final report, where he said that it went very well. Um, the big expenses so far in the year, obviously, are the great expense of the road salt, uh, beginning of the year expenses that we normally have, former police expenses and, and engineering expenses. Uh, we did have to spend some money on the flood mitigation, uh, type, uh, uh, things that we're working on now, so it's pretty much all the true expenses that we had to deal with, uh, in the last one. Uh, that's all I have.
Thanks. Uh, parks and recreation.
Uh, not much of a park really, it's closed, snowy, weather's stinks and everything. Uh, sort of looking to the future, like this coming season, summer and whatnot. The Glockton Run Park is really a big state of mind. Most of this is the Morris management report, but we put in a request for a grant from the state and supposedly we lost the paperwork. Morris buys enough, uh, the commission that, that whole baby CEP is basically out of business in what I understand. So where that's going, I don't know, plus the plantations up there. I don't know if we'll be able to do anything to the park this year or not. Chartier's Park, we're, we're gonna comprehensive plan for that. Flooding, finances are just not there to do the work, park needs some work, and parking lots down there, treasures, some other things we, we do have to do down there, but now we just don't have the money, so we're working on getting another grant for that, but that's probably down the road somewhere, hopefully. Uh, we'll have a meeting in the near future with our Parks Committee, some small things we can do in parks, won't cost too much money. Dressing up the parking lots a little bit, especially in, uh, pavilions and, currently some playgrounds, but that, stuff's in good shape down there, but it's been down there pushing one year, it's been a while. So, do, do vandalism and whatnot down there, I mean, the, the parks still, Chartier's especially is a beautiful park, I mean, we get a lot of use out of it, it needs some help, so. That's where we're going, hopefully we'll be able to do something, especially the parking lot and I need, get lane paved, watch for deer, something like that would be great. Talk to your president, Paul, maybe come up and stop. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Joe. Uh, park safety, Bill.
Yeah, I have nothing to add, like, I'll defer to the chief's report.
All right. Oh, what's, uh, Nino, all the works.
Well, we're moving snow right now, Mr. Chairman, at, at this time, I mean, it's all we've got. Uh, take care of the weather, uh, the snow and the ice and potholes, so, uh, we would be doing a good job, I see. Other than that, the, with that, it always comes from repair with the equipment, of course, and that's been taken care of. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor.
From Collier Township Police Department, Mayor Copeland, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Chief Chad King for his assistance with the threat at Chartier's Valley High Middle Schools on January twenty-third. He is a credit to the Bridgeville Police Department. He was among ten agencies that assisted and his leadership was instrumental in providing an organized, multi-agency response to the threat. It is a testament to our partnership with your agency and our other local law enforcement partners that their prompt and professional response allowed us to clear the threat effectively and efficiently. If we can be of assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to ask as Collier Township is indebted to your police department for the service that they provided. The officers of the Collier Township Police Department, students of the Chartier's Valley School District, and citizens of Collier Township. Signed by Craig Campbell, Chief of Police Department of Collier Township. As everyone knows, through public television, this is Black History Month. I'm grateful to all of you who took the time to attend the service at Solid Rock in honor of Martin Luther King. But we have a resident, George Barber, is ninety-two years old, has been a resident of Bridgeville since nineteen sixty-two, and was a nationally known, award-winning journalist with KDKA and Pittsburgh Courier, as well as an active citizen in Bridgeville. He was the first African-American hired as a broadcast journalist in the Pittsburgh market, where he was hired in nineteen sixty-four by KDKA and was a tireless advocate for using his broadcast journalism platform to fight discrimination whenever and wherever he found it, before retiring. A series of articles authored by Mr. Barber led to the development of diversity and hiring practice program for both the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. He also did a series of articles on school inequality that was read by Thirdwood Marshall and attached to a supplemental brief, brief sent to the Supreme Court in the nineteen fifty-four case of Brown versus the Board of Education. That case led to desegregation in the public school system in America. In addition, Mr. Barber made contributions in Bridgeville, among them, he was the volunteer chair of the advisory committee and the communications persons for the development of Bridgeville's recycling program. He was a member of First Fountain Stirk, long-term deacon, and president of Bridgeville Civic League for nineteen years. He and his wife, Gia Cross Barber, have been married for sixty-four years, their three children graduated from Chartier's Valley, Edward, Jack, and the late Carolyn. They were products of our Chartier's Valley grade school system. We greatly appreciate the contributions of Mr. Barber and his family to Bridgeville. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, police chief.
Thanks, Council President. Uh, just one item, I think around the beginning of March, we'll be doing the multi-jurisdictional food drive again, which we started last year. The neighboring jurisdictions of South Fayette, Collier Township, Haleburg, and Scott Township will be participating in that also. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe when we, we did the drive last year, uh, it ended up being the largest food donation ever to Bethany's Food Bank at Bethany Presbyterian Church, so we hope to equal that again this year. We'll advertise it on Facebook as the time gets closer.
They actually ran out of room.
Yeah.
They made room.
Yes, they did. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief.
So, sir, thank you, I have nothing to add.
Uh, your sites.
Thank you, Mr. Correct, so a couple of ideas, um, just wanted to give you an update since I've, to your manager's report, survey crews have completed the existing conditions survey at the end of Janeway for our proposed grant, and for cleaning the bridge from the, the debris from the bridge of Powell Road, and has also completed the field work for McLaughlin on Ballfield, so we can, uh, determine how much effort needs to be made to lower the field and build our trash rack. Once we do that, we'll make applications to the, uh, DEP and the County Conservation District for the necessary permits to proceed with that work. Okay? Another thing is, uh, pre-construction meeting on Thursday with the, uh, the contractors are gonna make the rest of renovations to Chartier's Park Restaurants. Uh, in his review of the documentation, it has permit from the, uh, the county, uh, we have not planned on making, there's never been hot water down there. And one of the things is, the Allegheny County Plumbing Department has required us to have hot water down there. So the, the best way to do that is to find a, uh, instantaneous hot water heater that's operating electricity. So he's given me a price of four thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars to do the electrical work and the installation of the, uh, on-demand hot water that would serve both events and the maintenance workers. So pass, you know, your consideration for that if you'd like to proceed with that work.
You hear right now?
Yeah.
No, no motion, please.
Is it mandatory or?
It's mandatory. Now, now you're counting up hot water, hot water.
So, I mean, I'll make that motion.
It's hardly we have to, right?
We have a four thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, so, all those, um.
I second.
Joe, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anything else, Joe? That's all.
I have a question, Joe, regarding the streets, what criteria do you use to determine whether streets need to be prep paved next year in Bridgeville?
I think, I think generally what we do is we look at the condition, I mean, we have a, an S Street inventory that we've been, we've been at over the years, and we, from a rating system we did about five years ago, we keep that updated, and we go back and look at that, see what's next in succession for, hey, there may be something that may need to be moved up because maybe some utility work has occurred, maybe we'll, we'll partner with a utility company and do a renovation, but if you have something you'd like to suggest we can go along and take a look at.
So residents can do that, you can call.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Uh, fire chief.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, I gave you guys all the reports, got you caught up for last year, and then the new one for this year, which we went to emergency reporting. Uh, one thing nice about that is it automatically goes right into the fire commissioner's office. We don't have to see them happen. It goes directly to him. The last thing I have is that time of year again, those are starting next month, fish fries. The community gathering, as we always call it.
Community gathering.
We have three of them this year because we have a wedding at one of them, so we had to give up a fish fry. It's actually a wedding for one of our members too, so.
We did a little fish fry. Do you have a fish's wife?
I don't know, I didn't ask for that, I should have.
Holy cow.
All right. C P L?
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Tom, do you have a Miller?
Uh, I do have a couple of things tonight, um, just to let everybody know that our subscription drive is soon to hit everybody's mailbox, so if everybody could, uh, help us out, subscribe, and we have insurance companies that cover the ambulance bills, the subscription really helps cover you when, if you should need us to leave, but if you do. Um, the CPR initiative we talked about, I don't know if it was the last meeting that I was here at, um, we're working to finalize that, I don't, my lead on that, kind of wanted to go via physician assistance, so we're trying to backfill that, um, but we should hopefully soon have the public push to do the handling of CPR and get that out in the community, like I had mentioned. Um, another item, South Ridge was very busy in two thousand eighteen, we gave you the statistics, uh, we were up five hundred calls from two thousand seventeen, and, uh, this came up many years ago, but we, unfortunately, it's coming up again, there are rumors of South Ridge going bankrupt, um, those are absolutely not true, so if you hear that, um, please kind of kibosh that from the top, that we are financially stable and aren't going anywhere, so. Um.
Can't lie.
Yeah. Um, oh, in, in reference to the CPR initiative, um, we're going to do two things, you know, there's two things happening with that. One is, uh, Cecil Towns, who actually does line item budget, is some help for us, so every year they're gonna be kind of contributing to us to kind of push this public, um, you know, give us a little funds to generate some interest in, uh, equipment to do that project. And also on Thursday, April eleventh, if you like golfing, um, we're gonna do, uh, a top golf tournament, we're gonna do a fundraiser out there, so get off in the afternoons from work, go learn to manage for some golf, uh, we'll outfly everybody out soon and.
What's the date again?
Uh, Thursday, April eleventh, from noonish one to five p.m. And no comments from the banker. So, that's all I got, thank you.
Dan, tell everybody how many calls you do a year.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Uh, original historical society.
Again, very quick, like, uh, going from golfing to tomorrow night. Tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the old Berleberg Station, the old library, is the second Tuesday done by John Reuter, and, um, we're getting near the end of this series. This is the nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty-nine class of Bridgeville High School. Hmm, in a couple weeks from now, or a month from now, it's going to be the nineteen sixty year, which is one of the best yearbooks I have ever seen in my life. But tomorrow night at seven, please come, if you're interested in Bridgeville High School, nineteen fifty-eight to fifty-nine. More interesting to me is one of the best speakers I have ever heard. He is a retired pastor, he loves history, particularly military war histories, and so on Sunday afternoon, February twenty-fourth, at one thirty, at the Bridgeville Volunteer Fire Department, he will be speaking, and it's a long title, but, um, I'll be happy to bring programs over, put in your mail bins, and I hope to see some of you at that program. He is excellent, believe me. And last but not least, we are back in.
Who was the name of the speaker?
His name?
Yes.
I didn't bring the page. These are all, they're all.
Serious, serious.
This, this last six weeks, six months.
I got you.
Done again, I tell you, it's been a stretch. But very last, but at least we do have raffle tickets for sale, they are five dollars a ticket, um, on the ticket would be four three-digit numbers, so that on March twenty-second, turn on seven o'clock news and get the number, and if you have the number on your ticket, then you have won two tickets to the, and I hope they're winning by then, the Penguins. Um, the game itself is Sunday, March thirty-first, at five p.m. And we hope that you all will participate in that money raiser, and I thank you very much.
Nice to see you back, Mary. Is it nice to see you back?
I, I'm pleased to be able to, thank you very much, it's good to be back.
Uh, Bridgeville Library, I'm not gonna report. Uh, if anybody gets a parking authority. Uh, planning commission?
Well, Mr. Chairman, it was nothing, nothing agreed. Sometimes I get kind of disturbed, but we in this position, we do get disturbed, and Elise is very, a good community person, she does a lot of work for it. But most of the thing we do in planning commission, listen, it's idea from professional people, and who we have to listen, we have engineer, we have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We come up with something on our own mind, of course, and we discuss it, but the meeting we already advertise every month, and we would like to see more cooperation from the, from the public, and they can either with us and those things. And, and, and sometimes, you know, we get, I get discouraged myself because we put a lot of work into, into this government, and then people either ignore it or don't have the time, but we, we don't do things on our own, they, we have a lot of professional people who advise on these things. But I appreciate you coming, so we should do it, advertise, let people know more about that, but they should come to the meeting as well. We'd like to see you there.
Thank you. That's all I have. Uh, manager, or you call.
Just good, I don't know if anyone has any questions or questions. Oh, that's fine. February fifteenth, yeah, February fifteenth is the deadline for, um, the residents involved the residents on Baldwin Street to, I sent them down a survey regarding a hazard mitigation grant, and uh the municipality has to apply for it on behalf of the residents. So, um the survey has to be by February fifteenth, and letters sent to us by February twenty-eighth, so.
Do you see any?
Two.
In favor of like wanting to participate?
Yes.
Okay. Any else?
That's all.
Thank you. Uh old business? New business? Most to adjourn, Bruce and second that one?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed?